I call to order the May 17th meeting of the Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission and ask that you join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one God, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all members of the commission are present except for Ms. Osborne. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held on April 19, 2006. Are there any additions, subtractions, corrections? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes for April 19.
So move Mr. Chair to approve April 19, 2006, minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second from Ms. Loretano. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the minutes are approved. We have a public comments section, session for this meeting. If you would please complete a speaker card for the commission secretary listing the subject that you would like to discuss. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Before you begin to speak, identify yourself by clearly stating for the record your name and address. Is there anyone that would like to address the commission on any item that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay. We'll move on to disclosure of experte communications. Does any member have experte communications? In the interest of total disclosure, I had a one-minute or less experte communication with our former member Dustin Jones on the... Paseo Ridge. Paseo Ridge. Thank you. I was really losing it. Is there any other disclosure of experte communication? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There's a single case on the consent agenda, case 05-300-00010, Panda Express Drive-Thru Restaurant Use Permit, a request for the approval of a use permit for the Panda Express Drive-Thru Restaurant generally located on 0.84 acres, 1,600 feet north of Van Veren Street, on the west side of Australia Parkway, within the proposed Canyon Trails Plaza Phase Two Commercial Center. The applicant is ITRA Group, Inc., and the staff recommendation is to continue this case, the public hearing for this case till June 21st, meeting of the planning commission. Is there anyone that would like to pull that from the consent agenda and consider it for discussion? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move Mr. Chair to approve Consent Agenda, Item A, to the June 21, 2006 Planning Commission Meeting.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Take it.
I have a second for Mr. Lux. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. We have four cases, two under old business and two under new business regarding the Paseo Ridge Phase One and Phase Two, the rezoning, and then the preliminary plat for both sections as well. If we can have a presentation on the entire package and then we'll go ahead and take each item separately for commission action.
We'd be happy to, sir.
I'd like to open the public hearing and ask for your staff presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The Paseo Ridge is 120 acres, or back into Phase One and Phase Two are combined, 120 acres, and are located at 183rd and Yuma Road. And if I could just direct your attention to the map here for just a moment, we'll go over the vicinity. This is the south 80 acres along here, which is Phase One. The north 40 would be up here, which is Phase Two. This is Yuma Road along here, 183rd Avenue along here, sir. While we're here, just to point out a couple of other items here, this is La Privada up to the north, which we'll talk about later, Los Matanis, just to give you a reference, which y'all saw, I believe, two meetings ago, and the Padera all the way down to the Currently, the north 40 and the south 80 are in separate annexations that are, will be going before council in the weeks to come. The applicant is asking or requesting a zoning to an R-16 single-family residential zoning district. They're also requesting preliminary plat approval this evening. If I could direct your attention to the general plan map, and again, I would just point out that the Saeo Ridge parcels are here, Phase Two being to the north here, Phase One, the south 80 down here, Los Matanis, La Privada again. General plan calls for low-density residential with a baseline density of 2 to 4 units per acre. The applicant is a participating member of the Memo of Understanding, and Paseo is proposing a combined density of 3.01 dwelling units per acre. Combined Phase One and Phase Two consist of 350 single-family residential lots with two separate lot sizes, one being 60 and 70-foot wide lots with 7 and 7,500 square foot. Phase One consists of, which is the south 80 here, Phase One consists of 214 total lots, 90 of which are of the 60-foot product and 124 of which are the 70-foot product. Paseo Ridge Phase One offers 19.7, 0.07 acres of open space, or roughly 23 percent of Phase One is open space. Amenities included in this Phase One proposal are three pocket parts, a shared green belt with the Los Matanis development to the west, shaded ramadas, ball fields, pedestrian connection trail system, and a multi-use equestrian trail, which is located on the eastern boundary and turns and heads towards the west at the bottom of the south 80 or Phase One. Phase Two is 136 lots, which is comprised of the 60-foot product, and which gives a baseline density of 3.25. It's offering 7.56 acres of open space, which roughly equates to 19 percent for the north 40. Amenities in this product for Phase Two include pocket parts, numerous lots facing open space, and shaded top lots as well. I would like to direct your attention to, the site is a little unique in that this is the second property, ladies and gentlemen, that we've seen that's had to deal with the drainage channel that's coming, starting up in the Amber Meadows project and working its way down south. Just would like to show you on the exhibit that it does come down, traverses from north to south along the eastern border of the development, and then is turned and directed to the west in order to deliver it to the Padera development at an advantage point that was conducive to both departments. The applicant is, at this time, the only property that's dealt with this, and has actually had to redirect this and taken it back across in order to not impose it on someone else that is in our opportune place. Neighborhood meeting was held on February 23, 2006 at City Hall. We had ample neighborhood participation at that meeting. There was no opposition or opposed to this development at that meeting. Staff is recommending approval with the stipulations before you. That concludes my presentation, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions, if any, from members of the commission? Mr. Jones, you had a brief presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I will take the hint of brief as my cue for my presentation. My presentation will generally be a summary of what has been stated by staff so far. For the record, named Dustin Jones, with Snell and Wilmer. Here on behalf of the developer of this site, Mariah Development, I have Nick Lees with me, who's in attendance, also Karen Keith, who is a planner in our office here. Again, the slides that I prepared, at this point, seem very redundant and are a summary of what staff has presented to you already. As staff has indicated, the project is being developed in two phases, Phase One being on the south side of Yuma and Phase Two being on the north. The general sizes of the different properties being the south side, Phase One being about 80 acres, 214 units, 2.76 dwelling units on the site. Note the open space of 24.6 percent. That number is derived by the large drainage channel as well as the open space and parks that are on the site. Phase Two is on the north side of the street, roughly 43 acres on that site, 136 units proposed for the site, 3.25 dwelling units per acre on that, with an open space of about 18.1 percent. So the total for the two projects combined, you can see on the right margin there, about 350 units proposed, 2.93 dwelling units per acre on the site, and open space of 22.3 percent, which provides quite a bit of amenities for the people that would be living in this development to be able to go out and enjoy the trail system and the parks that are on the site. This here is a landscape plan that just highlights the parks as well as the open space areas on the site. Here we can go through some of the amenities that have been proposed as well, some of the park location at the entry portion of the site, as well as some of the other amenities, including the signage on the entryway there as you come into the site. Also, again, focusing as you come into the site, a very open entry with the park adjacent to it, the model home location lots, as well as the 75-foot wide retention basin. At our neighborhood meeting we held back in February, the property owners to our east showed up, and it's a county property to the west. Most of the members that live in this section to our east are of one single family, the Castillo family, and they spoke, and they're actually very pleased with the distance of that drainage channel, the width of it, the fact that it was going to be a landscape area and it's going to provide a buffer. Some of the homes that the family is building on, there are lots that are actually going to be facing west, or facing onto that green belt there, so they were quite pleased with the attention to the green belt, knowing that they're not just going to have a wall that's built right on their property line, but that there's going to be some landscapes offering between the two properties. So I have a slide that shows the Phase Two portion of the project to the north, comparable amenities with the entry monuments, as well as signage and open space on the site. In conclusion, as staff has indicated, this project was part of the memorandum of understanding that we're entered into by the developers in this region about a year ago to provide a sewer solution to prepay, accelerate their funding of their sewer impact fees in order to accelerate the completion of the sewer plant within the area. As an exchange for doing so, the developers that entered into these MOUs were granted a .85 density bonus from the two units for dwelling acre, which is what's prescribed in the general plan, to a baseline of 2.85, and we're consistent with that. We've also provided some other amenities that bumps us up to the 2.93 as staff has indicated, and some of those benefits are the additional open spaces being provided that staff has indicated that we're having to burden our site with, which is drainage that comes from many of the properties to the north that flow south and then are collected on our site. At this time, we'd open it up for any questions, and we can address those at this time. Thank you for your time.
Questions for the applicant? Mr. Gelsner?
Dustin, preliminary plat, page, preliminary plat, second phase, the third page, there are two properties to the southwest corner that your project is going to back up to that are owned, look like they're owned by one family.
Phase Two?
The north 40. Yeah, the Michael A. and Joan D. Trigubov properties. Page three, the little, on the southwest corners.
That's me.
Oh.
Trigubov?
Yeah, which I, sorry, I butchered your name.
I said I am.
What's, can you tell me what, you know, how are you going to treat that edge of, how are you treating that edge of your property? And I guess I'd like to hear from the property owner if they have concerns.
Okay, great. I was going to ask you to put the memo up. So the two properties we're talking about are this one here and this one here.
Correct.
As you can see on the preliminary plat, what we have on our side is a retention basin here, open space on the north side of the property, as well as on this track two that's created here, that's open space, and then it looks like there are about four or five units that are by this side of the development.
I mean, are we doing a wall, or will there be a wall back there, or what's?
Behind the units, there would be a wall. These would be the rear wall along the properties here, they would have their back wall here. But there is not a wall that's proposed on the bottom of the track. There would not be a wall on this side here, and there would not be a wall on track two. The open space would just be open, so it would not be walled in, just the walls on the backs of the properties.
Okay.
On the outside of the tracks?
Okay. So the wall's going to be on the outside of track two, follow the houses behind it, and it'll go outside of track three, and then go all the way up, straight up north? Is that correct?
Correct.
Could I, Mr., can we ask the property owner who happens to be here?
Sure.
What their plans are for these two parcels? Would you come up and identify yourself?
Yeah, my name's Mike Trigubov. I live at 18502 West Yuma Road, and lived there for 27 years. My family farmed all that land forever, and I'm not real thrilled about any of this, needless to say. Nobody's ever came to me and approached me or said what they're going to do or anything. This is why I'm showing up here. It's like, oh, hey, this is pretty interesting, I guess. I'm not thrilled about them building a wall up around me, you know. Like I say, they've never approached me, and I guess I'm going to, I guess that's progress on the west side. My biggest complaint right now, with all of this development going out here, is not enough roads and not enough of the infrastructure to support any of this stuff, and of course, it's going to mess up what I've lived, had to live with for 27 years, which is open skies and stars and all the other neat stuff that I came out here for. Third generation Arizona, you know, lived here forever, and now I get to see all these people coming and moving around me, so what am I going to do? How am I going to fight that, you know? And it's everything to the west of me, or that east of me where he's at, that my uncle sold all that off to him. I can't beat my uncle up, he died. Everything to the west of me is my cousin, and I don't know when he's going to sell, so I'm kind of boxed in there. Don't care about it at all, but I mean, I don't care for it, but I don't know what they can do to make me happy, buy me out, I guess. Nobody's ever talked to me, like I say, about any development or any of that, so not happy about it, but they got big money, I don't.
Was there any? Can I ask one more question? On the two sections that are listed as your property, is there one residence and small farming? Is that correct?
Yeah, I have a barn on the back acre, in the front I have my house, and my well is on a, my well's right, kind of split in the two.
Okay.
And, you know, I have everything right there, I have the two acres.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, if I could clarify again, we're looking at the plat a little more detail here. The perimeter wall goes on the units, is behind the units, so this is the perimeter wall that backs up to lot 276. Maybe I can zoom in a bit.
Okay, I can follow.
So there's a perimeter wall that runs along the units here. It then wraps around this unit here on the side. This is open, the end of the, at the end of the elbow there, and then lot 275, there's a wall that runs around the perimeter there and then runs north. So there is not a perimeter wall that runs around the outside of the track. So adjacent to Mr. Trigubov's property, this would be open here, and then the wall, there would be a wall that's the back of these homes running north.
And then, does, at unit 270, what does the wall do? Does it follow 270's back property line, or does it, does it wrap around? Is track three open?
Goes directly to the west. Goes directly, no, just straight over.
It is over here? Okay.
And straight back then.
Okay, and then it goes, okay. All right, thank you.
What kind of wall are we talking about?
Standard, yeah, standard CMU's block wall, backyard wall.
Anything, any other questions? I had one question to clarify. On page 10 of the Phase One, and I think it's repeated in the other booklet, Phase One rezoning application, and under schools, it indicates that the area is in the Avondale Elementary School District and the Awafria Union High School District, and I think the correct designations are Liberty and Buckeye Union.
Mr. Chairman, you are correct, and we'll make that change.
That's page nine of the...
Phase Two is page nine?
Yeah. I noted that, so.
Was there a specific reason that you went with a rezoning rather than a PAD?
The density that we needed was accommodated with the hard zoning. We didn't need to go through a PAD that the hard zoning accommodated. It was just going to be residential development. The standards, the development standards in the district that we requested work.
Was there some reason why Mr. Trigubov was not contacted regarding purchase of his property?
Not the property my client purchased when he bought the property to develop it.
Okay.
Mr. Trigubov knew we bought property. He deals with Cheryl, who's his relative.
I think he indicated that he knew his uncle.
I think my uncle was Cheryl, although they were selling, they were selling that my uncle before he passed away. I mean, I talked about it.
Okay.
As far as, I was never approached by other than my cousin.
My client purchased it from somebody else, and it wasn't the deal, what he was being sold.
Other questions from members of the commission? Okay. Is there anyone that would like to speak? I don't have any interest cards. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this case? Yes, Eric, you'll come up and provide your name and address?
Yes, my name is Bill Lanier Jr., and I'm at 905 South 181st Avenue, and I'm located at a property just north and east of that, off of Yuma Road and 181st Avenue. And what my question is, is why is the unit density, why does it need and have to be changed from what it already is? Because we're concerned about all of the units, all of the residences that are going in, their sources of water. All of us are on wells out in that area. We're concerned about that, as well as the traffic and the people moving in that are not used to livestock, because a lot of us out there have livestock and horses and goats and whatnot that we raise, and so we're really concerned about the rampant development that is coming out there, and a lot of that also has to do with the amount of units that they're trying to squeeze on an acre. And so a lot of us out there are concerned with that, with the water and the acreage and whatnot.
Okay. What I'd like to suggest to you is that you might want to get a copy of the Goodyear General Plan that was adopted and amended two years ago, went before the voters, and was approved. All of this land, not just here, but way south toward Mobile and so forth, have been planned for various uses, including residential with the density spelled out, and this shouldn't be a surprise to anybody, because there were, I can't tell you how many public meetings regarding the general plan, meetings regarding the election to approve the general plan, and unfortunately, the ownership of the land has the opportunity to petition the city for rezoning if it's consistent with the general plan, so that's where the process starts. Included in the plan is the road improvements, water sources. The developers have to provide a certification of 100-year water source for their, not wells. They're going to be operating off city water in this particular situation, and the, there are water rights that are associated with the land itself that get converted to the city, and they in turn become a source for potable water for these developments. We also note in the rezoning stipulations that the potential buyers are notified and have to sign off regarding airport noise, the animal and agricultural activity in the area. They're well aware of that. Two years after they're in the house, do they continue to recognize it and be happy with it? Maybe not. As we know, there've been dairies and chicken farms that have had to move because the surrounding development has become a problem. On the other hand, we've had a number of developments go up that were adjacent to county islands. Those folks didn't want to be disturbed, so a lot of the things that we might have done to help the compatibility, we've tried to do what we could, but they don't want to be part of the city, and we can't by law invest money in the county. Therefore, we're kind of at loggerheads, but the recognition is that there are going to be situations where if you don't own the land, then the owner has the right to petition the city to rezone that property in conformance with the general plan. So it may not be viewed as progress in your mind, and I certainly can understand that, but Arizona is a state that feels strongly about property rights, and the owner of the property has the right to petition for the rezoning. And the rezoning here that we're looking at is the... And the rezoning here that we're looking at is, the, the density is less than they might have gotten if they were to, to petition us for a PAD, and that's a planned area development. In addition, they have made major contributions to the drainage flow from north to south and then from east to west, where they lost a lot of developable land, so that we've made some concessions to them, so that they can recover their costs. And part of that is, is the density that the staff referred to in terms of going from two to almost three. Most of the single-family residential developments that we've got going in Goodyear are well over three, and the, between three and a half and four dwelling units to the acre. So this is, in our view, a less dense than it might have been, and it, in part, in concession for things that they are doing for the city and for the community to improve drainage in that area, which may in, in the long run benefit the property owners that are further to the, to the west and to the north, and some to the south that are now getting water, where that's going to go from east to west. So we certainly understand that there are a number of homeowners that have interests in livestock, larger acreage. We're doing the best that we can to accommodate the interface and to let the new residents know that you're there. But unfortunately, part of the, the value of the land is that folks that we're farming are selling their land to developers, and they may be your former neighbors, in some cases, family members. They're, they're converting their ground to cash, and they have every right to do that. Okay?
Well, I agree with that, because in Arizona, we should feel very strongly about individual private property rights. And that also includes, includes ours, because we also have property rights. And one of the things you said about people moving in and then in a couple of years, they complain about this or that, the smell, or, or the flies, or the dust. And then it just seems to me that in instances like that, then my property rights just kind of-
I, I-
Go away.
I don't, I don't see where we've diminished your property rights.
The right for me to have livestock on my front.
We're not taking that away.
Right, but you said about five minutes ago that if people-
Somebody may complain. I'm not saying we're gonna, we're, they may complain. We're gonna show them the piece of paper that they signed. You know, they, they have to take responsibility for that.
Right.
Please don't construe that we're gonna come out and take your animals away.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about the people that move into the subdivision.
Well, they're, they're gonna have to deal with that. They may not be happy about it. They may, they may sell and move somewhere else because of it, but there's nothing the city is going to do, or can do, to take away what you have.
Okay, that's excellent. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you.
If you care, sir, there's a couple of copies of the current general plan that, and the affected property.
Yeah, we're in the county islands, so.
Right.
We'd be, we'd be happy to talk to you about annexation.
I don't think not today.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to get it, if I could, get a copy of what he, that shows my property in there. And then, what I, I'm curious, I, I saw on the plan there that they had a park or something behind me, behind my property, and then up towards the front there. Who owns that land? There's no houses sitting on it. Who, is the city gonna own that, or?
The, the homeowners association for that community will, will be responsible for maintaining that property.
Okay. Or if I had issue with that down the line or something, you'd-
Absolutely.
-like to have that with me.
Absolutely.
Okay. I think that's about it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is April Feaver, and I live at 910th South 180th Avenue, just to the east of the proposed development. And I kind of fall in suit with them as far as having concerns of having such a, a large development coming in next door. Most of the people in our residence are at least one acre, most are two and a half, if not up to five and 10 acres. And I know you had mentioned in the past conversation with him that you've had dairies that have been pushed out, you've had chicken farms that have been pushed out because they complained enough. Well, obviously, those rights were taken away.
No, they, they weren't, they weren't pushed out in that sense. What occurred was the development around them raised their land value to the point where they decided to move from, the one that I'm thinking of is Hickman's Egg Ranch that moved out to Mobile?
Arlington.
Arlington. It, it was a series of actions, but ultimately, it was the value of the underlying land. They, they could sell what they had and build an absolutely top rate from a technological standpoint, place out in Arlington and have money left over. The same thing with the dairy farms. At a, at a point, the people complained about the smell, but that wasn't what drove them out. What drove them out, didn't really drive them out, they took the money and ran. The value of the land got to a point where they could move their entire operation to further out Tonopah, Mobile, Maricopa, and they had money left over. So it was the value of the land, more than anything else, that caused them to, to sell out.
Well, another one of my, my questions that I had for the developer on our last meeting was, was there any consideration to keep the current zoning, which is one house per acre, and build, and make it a community of currently what is around there, which is, of course, people, you know, goat people, or just agricultural people. And to the southeast of these developments, there is a, a current residence or a current horse community that's in there, that's right next to Cotton Flower, which is on Cotton Lane. And I know a lot of people that lived in there, and most of those were two-plus acres, and, and a lot of those people have had complaints, and their roads are now paved, and they've had, you know, issues with those people living there, and the lights, and, and their value of living basically went down. A lot of those people sold out, and what's going in there is what I was asking if they had considered, which is they're basically building a custom home on there, and they're selling, from my understanding, like crazy. And it, I was told it wasn't a consideration because the money wasn't there. And I, I, I know that personally, I feel that that is probably an inaccurate statement. I have people stopping by my house all the time, asking me, because it is irrigated land, which is very, very hard to find for horse property, and people asking all the time if anybody plans on selling, or if I plan on selling, if I could call them. You know, my answer is, you know, dream on. I mean, I moved out there for a reason, just like everybody else did. And I, I was kind of hoping that there would at least be an attempt to see if there was a, a reasonable way for them to still make their money, but keeping it a long suit, which is a one, one house per, per acre for horse and cattle.
I'd be happy to ask Andy to-
Dustin, please.
I'm sorry, Dustin.
I'm gonna take this one. I'll take this one. If you, there was a, there was a slide that was put up that showed several of the properties that are being developed. It was a color aerial photograph. There are 16 large properties that probably are over 1,000 acres of land that all borders that basically runs east of Perryville Road, that all the owners have signed a development, a master development agreement with the city of Goodyear. And all of these developers are, have been granted a minimum of 2.85 houses per acre. And that makes the projects economically viable, so that in the future, I'm, I'm just telling you, you know, we passed out the zoning, we passed out the land use maps, and if you look, everything that runs down on the, on the Perryville border is zoned, is basically, has been zoned, two to four houses per acre. And so you're gonna see a minimum of 2.85, probably you're gonna see somewhere in the, in the 3.0 to 3.2 houses per acre. And that is gonna be the entire west side of Goodyear. And what's gonna be left are the county island pockets that have chosen not to annex into the city. And those pockets are invited to annex into the city and work with the city to do that, but at this point in time, they've chosen not to, and thus, development is gonna go right around them. So that's your future.
I'm just kind of confused. If this has already been determined, what's the point of having a rezoning hearing?
This is, this is a rezoning hearing for this individual property.
Correct.
But there is a memorandum of understanding with the 16 properties, and that is basically to provide the infrastructure, the sewer water, and roads that are gonna be going in there, and to basically work out a, a development program so that it'll be paid for without dipping into the city's coffers to a great extent. But that's the reason why it's all, this was all worked out about a year, year and a half ago.
And these large developments or pockets or properties that you're referring to on the, on the west side of Perryville, from my understanding, there's no-
West side of Perry, west side of Perryville is Buckeye.
So you're talking-
I'm talking east side of Perryville, that if you go from I-10 down almost MC-85, there are very, there are 16 large 120, 300-acre parcels that will become houses. And that, and, and then if you go, if you look at Buckeye's planning, land use map, everything to the west of Perryville Road, that first mile to the west is basically planned in, I think, two to five.
Three to five.
Three to five.
Three to five units.
Three to five units per acre. So that, that's what's coming. And, and, yeah, it's not gonna be here next week, but five years from now, it'll be here. So we're just telling you what's gonna happen, so that you can plan accordingly. Because if this is not the lifestyle that you want, you have to do something about it.
Well, again, it kind of brings me to the confusion, you know, the confusion as to if it's already been determined, why is there even a rezoning hearing, I guess, I guess that I-
There's a, every property has to go through all of the steps of the process, and nothing is declare, nothing, nothing is, the memorandum of, of understanding is just that. These, these, but these individual steps are legal processes that each owner has to go through to get the rights so that he can develop, he or she can develop the property. Did I miss anything? I think you covered it very well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Any other questions or comments from the commission? Ms. Laura Towns.
I would just like to make a comment. I, I understand the public's, you're all concerned, you moved out there for a reason, you wanted it quiet. When I moved out to Arizona in 1973, we lived at Seventh Street and Thunderbird, you could see coyotes. Now you go to Seventh Street and Thunderbird and Bell Road, and it's one of the busiest intersections. It's central Phoenix now. So it grows and it changes. As these developments go, and from what I've seen since I've been on the commission, I'm very pleased with this, when there's lots of open space, there's lots of parks. One thing I've seen with the homeowners associations is that they do keep them well-maintained, so they will be well-maintained. There's continuity. No one's gonna paint their house purple, includes green stripes in these neighborhoods, so there'll be some continuity. And they usually keep the grounds fairly well-maintained and everything. So what is coming to you and through the city's zoning process, and what is coming there, is a nice product. It's not gonna stay that way. You know, I know you moved out there, and that's what you love, and your county island is rather large, so you'll still have your lifestyle there, but what the Goodyear is putting in around you, I will have to say, from what I've seen approved in the past, and from what this is, you know, they're a nice product. So I hope you'll be pleased when it does come, as commissioners were saying, that there's more coming, and, you know, Arizona's just booming. And there really is no stopping the growth in this state right now.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll close the public hearing and ask for commission action on the four items before us. The first being, the first being the rezoning of Paseo Ridge Phase One. Then we'll proceed to Phase Two.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of case 05-2000021, Paseo Ridge Phase One Rezone, with, I believe, 55 stipulations.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Gelsner. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next case is case 06-200-00011, Paseo Ridge Phase Two Rezone. Entertain a motion on that case.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case 06-20000011, Phase Two of Paseo Ridge, with the, how many stipulation? 55 stipulations.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. DeBrock. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is cases 05-500-00023, Paseo Ridge Phase One Preliminary Platt. Request for the approval of the preliminary plat for Paseo Ridge Phase One, subdividing approximately 80.35 acres into 214 single-family lots, generally located the southeast corner of Yuma Road and 183rd Avenue, in the single-family residential R-16 district. Entertaining motion regarding that case.
Uh, Mr. Chair, motion to approve case 05-50000023, Paseo Ridge Phase One, with preliminary plat.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Bay. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next case is case 06-500-0009, Paseo Ridge Phase Two Preliminary Platt. Request for the approval of the preliminary plat for Paseo Ridge Phase Two, subdividing approximately 43.53 acres into 136 single-family lots, generally located in the northwest corner of Yuma Road and 183rd Avenue, in the single-family residential R-16 district. I will entertain a motion regarding that case.
I'll move that we approve 06-5000009, the preliminary, preliminary plat for, I believe, Phase Two of Paseo Ridge, with the listed stipulations.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second from Mr. DeBrock. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next case is case 05-200-00028, La Privada Rezone. Request for the approval to rezone approximately 197.8 acres, generally located in the southeast corner of Perryville and Harrison Street, in the northeast corner of Yuma Road at the 183rd Avenue alignment, from Agricultural Urban, AU District, to the final planned area development, PAD District. The applicant is Robert Watt of Omega Management Services, Inc. I will open the public hearing, ask for the staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I would like to direct your attention back to the map that we started with originally, and I just would, I'd like to point out La Privada again for you. And just indicate that this is, again, Perryville Road along here, Yuma Road to the south here. La Privada is this unique T-shaped parcel here. And again, just for reference, the Van- And again, just for reference, the Van, the Paseo Ridge development. Basically, La Privada is 197.8 acres. They're asking for a rezone to the final planned area development, along with approval of their preliminary plat for you this evening. Their annexation and development agreement are in the processes, and we expect that those will go to the city council meeting next month as well. I'd like to direct your attention to the general plan, if I may. Again, I would point out that general plan calls for a density of two, four units per acre. The applicant is a member of the MEO, and La Privada is asking for a 3.10 dwelling units per acre. I'd like to show you now the lotting. Just walk a little bit more, outline for you details of the request. La Privada is proposing 578 units in a gated community. They're proposing two lot sizes. Their minimum lot size would be 7,000 square foot, with their largest lot size being roughly 8,700 square foot. And again, they're offering a product that's 60-foot wide and 70-foot wide widths as well. They're offering 37.5 acres of open space, which is roughly 20.1% of the total development. I would also point out at this point, and I would direct your attention to this blue spot right here, which is indicating the 8.0 acres that La Privada is dedicating for a school site. You may remember with the Amber Meadows site, they were dedicating seven acres and for a joint 15-acre Liberty Elementary School site. That's the other half of it that you see there. Each parcel is designed, as you can see, around a park-type atmosphere. And then there's another item that's fairly unique to this development. Each parcel is also developed with a, as they talk about in the narrative, with a different tree program for each neighborhood. And as you can see here, these are private streets. There's a five-foot detached sidewalk with a five-foot landscape strip in there, with each, each development having a different type of tree. You may see cottonwood trees, and I would defer to the applicant as to actually the tree that, to discuss more in detail the trees that you might see in there. Amenities also included in this area include totlots, shaded remadas, basketball courts, barbecue facilities, neighborhood pedestrian trails, bike paths, and of course, a multi-use equestrian trail that is located to the east of the development. Two neighborhood meetings were conducted on this proposed rezoning. We held the first one on February 23rd. We held the second one just last week, May 11th. Two very good meetings, and with lots of participation, and several developments came out of those two meetings, and I would just like to reflect on those briefly as we speak. Based on those meetings, I think it's safe to say that three things in this development changed significantly. Originally, we repositioned the school site, which in turn allowed us to end Harrison Street right there at 183rd, which is this corner right here. And originally, there had been concern in Harrison Street went all the way through to 181st. Based on that road configuration, we also had improvements along 181st. Clearly, those were two items that the county residents just were not in support of. And I think that's reflected in this new directive that you're seeing here tonight. Staff is recommending approval. Before I go, but the third thing on there was that, was that the developer has agreed to single-story restrictions along the county resident, the eastern portion of this development. And with the roughly 100-foot buffer in the drainage channel and multi-use equestrian trail, it seems to be appropriate. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the stipulations that are before you. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is available, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Mr. Bay.
Rick, just one quick question.
Yes, sir.
In your presentation, you stated that these were private streets.
Yes, sir.
Does that mean that they do not meet city standards for, for the construction of those thoroughfares? Or are they private streets in the sense that they are community streets? Do they meet our standards for streets? That's all I'm asking.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay. In the sense that it's a typical 50-foot residential street, no, sir, it doesn't meet it in that. Will they be built to design standards and construction standards? Absolutely. Will they be maintained by the HOA and not the city of Goodyear? That is correct as well.
Rick, before you...
Yes, sir.
Go back to this document that you placed at the beginning. Now, on Las Palmas Phase 1 and 2, particularly 2, the east side had drainage, okay? On Paseo 2. Now, how does that interact, the drainage? How does that show on this T? Out of La Privada, where is that drainage coming from?
Actually, sir, the drainage channel that contains the multi-use equestrian trail...
Right.
That's actually located on the east side of Phase 1, which is roughly right along this area right here. All right?
Okay.
And what that does is it proceeds up through here, about three-quarters of the way up through, and then basically traverses through there, travels around that school site, and then up to the RID.
Oh, okay. So that's the green on the T page, I'm not sure, E1, here on E1, that's the drainage then that would come by the school, and then down the east boundary, and then it would come into Phase 1 of Las Palmas.
Sir, in this exhibit right here?
Yeah.
This right here is basically Phase 2 of the Paseo Ridge.
Right.
Okay. And here it is coming basically off RID, coming around the school site, and then straight down the eastern portion of that.
Okay, all right. And then it will flow back west on the base of Phase 1?
Correct, sir.
Okay.
That is correct.
That answers them.
Other questions for staff? Ms. Laura Towne.
Just briefly, the equestrian trail that, because that was my question too, kinda like how it connected, that'll be open to the people who have the county, that won't be walled in or anything? That'll be like a buffer and open?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, that is correct.
Okay.
And actually, what it does is, it does vary a little bit off this. It is situated in the drainage channel along the eastern portion of this, and then will continue up here. It proceeds north, it will head back to the west here, and then it will connect up with the Amber Meadows portion of that, and then continue up.
So that could be something that other people would be...
Oh, absolutely. And actually, the actual mileage escapes me, but once it's all put together, you'll basically be able to go from that RID canal all the way down past, well, at least a mile south of Lower Buckeye. So it'll be a pretty good little...
Thank you.
...question drill.
Mr. Gelsner.
Rick, north of where the 100-foot drainage channel swings to the west, on the picture you have up there, what's the width of that equestrian trail and the tree lines that are just backing up to the house? It's basically what's called parcel one out of this master plan.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, just clarify, are you, sir, are you talking about...
Right there, you got it, you got it.
Oh.
Forty toes.
Forty, forty-toe feet, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on the school site. That's a half school site, and the other half is in Amber Meadows? Is that how I understood that?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct.
Okay.
It's a 15-acre, it's a 15-acre school site.
Okay. Is then the rendering here of the Amber Meadows existing situation is not correct?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, it is correct. And I would characterize it in this way. Originally, when you, when we saw this preliminary plat months ago, there was a stipulation added and some ghosting in, with the stipulation that read something along the lines of, and there's one similar to it in this PAD, that in the event that the school site doesn't come in, La Privada doesn't develop, Amber Meadows and La Privada each would have the right to go ahead and develop that, with additional, with additional lots added to that. The depiction that you're seeing right there is the ghosted-in portion of that. The original approval on that preliminary plat does not have that bolded in, is that a good way to say?
Okay. But, but the complementary piece is, in fact, that area to the west?
Yes, sir. And it looks actually something along the lines of...
Okay. I'm good. Other questions of staff? I apologize for trying to drag you into another case for which you've had no dog.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, my name is Andy Moore. My address is 3101 North Central, Suite 1000. I'm here on behalf of the developer, Omega Management. With me, I have Bob Watt and Susan Bell from Omega. I have Andy Behren, our landscape architect, and Russell, Warren Russell, our engineer. So they'll be backing me up when I get in trouble. You know, Chairman Horsman, I don't mind you doing that to me, because Dustin spoke ahead of me at a legal conference yesterday and put all the rest of us to shame with his Smellin' Wilmer PowerPoint presentations that moved and twirled, and I just handed out my black-and-white copy, so I didn't mind that little trick with Dustin. Let me just quickly go through a few depictions of what we're doing, and I think you have a pretty good idea from staff's presentation of what we're proposing here. Again, it's 578 dwelling units being proposed on 198 acres roughly. As we've heard several times, the general plan designation in this area is two to four, low-density residential, and we'll be coming in at 3.1, so we're well within the median of that. And as has also been pointed out, this is one of the 16 MOU properties. And so the development agreement, the annexation, this case, and the pre-plat, should you recommend approval, will all be together at city council coming up in the weeks ahead. We're looking forward to that. Our project has several main entry presentation points. One is right at the corner of Harrison and Perryville, right here. And the other one is, as cars are coming in here. So we're gonna, an entry monumentation theme on each of those corners, even though you don't enter exactly there, we're depicting what that'll look like, something like that here, as you go into the development. As we said, it is gonna be a gated community. There's a depiction of what that gating rendering would look like as you're coming in. Our community works this way with respect to the gates. These streets are open. Harrison Street is open up to here, and 183rd Avenue is open up to Harrison. It's when you get up to the end of Harrison here, and there's a gate, a gate down here on 183rd, gates here on either side of 183rd, and then a gate up here on Harrison Street. So the traffic's able to flow in. These are public streets here, and then within are the private streets in our development. We have, as staff pointed out, we have a street tree program in our development, so that each local, you know, each section will have a sort of a unique identity with respect to the trees. This rendering, you've just seen this during staff's presentation, we wanted to show you not only the street issue there, but it's also designed to show something else that we like about this development. We've got a variable front setback program, so that for our lots themselves, all lots within La Privada will have setbacks varying between 20 to 26 feet, with mandatory at least three feet difference between each adjacent home. And as well, we've got a varied garage setback and option, so that if you choose, if the builder chooses side entry garages, which are an option, that'll be different from the front entry garages. There's a variable 10 to 16-foot setback for the living space of the unit where side-access garages are utilized. So as you can see, it presents a real interesting streetscape. You're seeing, what you're seeing here are pavers that we're having in all the places where the trails cross over mid-development. For instance, here, 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 we've put, you know, special accents, as you get the idea that someone may be crossing there. You're seeing the setback front of the homes and things like that. So we like the end result and the look that we're trying to achieve. We hope you do, too. There's two-size lots in this development. There's the, these brown parcels are all one size, and those are the minimum lots of 60 by 120. The typical lot size for these is gonna be 7,710. So they're quite a bit bigger than the minimum that we're going for. As well as these two parcels here, a typical lot size of 9,345 square feet, minimum of 70 by 125 for the lot sizes. One thing that we're real excited about in this development is our park, open space, and trails that we have going on. I'll show you just briefly the orientation, and then I'll just, let you see what they look like. This is our parks and trails master plan. I should mention also, we already talked about the multi-use equestrian trail that runs up here. This trail is not only, as we're asked, a trail for our development or for the county residents, it's a regional trail, and it's all part of the general plan. In the general plan, there's a trail line running sort of midsection along here, and it was rerouted up here in Amber Meadows, so that it goes up to the canal. Now, we haven't figured out what to do at the canal yet. We're hoping the city will solve that problem and do a big crossing. But it's there, and then it continues on in Las Palmas to the north, going around that project, and as you've heard, it will go quite a ways when it's ultimately done. As far as the parks, we have three active parks, our major parks, in this development. One here in the center of that portion, one here, and one here. We have three passive parks, one here, one here, and one here. And we have another three pocket parks, one up in the center of the top, one over here, and one at the other end of the T. So we've got six essential, if you wanna call a pocket park, if you count all that, we have nine. This is just a perspective of what your typical active park may look like from the street. As staff mentioned, our active parks, two of them are gonna have full basketball courts and totlas, with, as all your cases do, shade structures over the play equipment. All three of the active parks will contain remadas, bike parking, bench seating, barbecues, drinking fountains, open turf play areas. This is kind of the plan of what our active parks would look like. Again, you can see the basketball court, the totlot, the benches and things are actually, most of them are under the trees, although they're pointed out. Our passive parks, I showed you where the three passive parks are located. This is a plan for one of our passive parks. They all contain remadas and open play areas. There's, in various locations throughout the development, so people can have access to them conveniently. And then again, our typical pocket parks that also have remadas in them and some turf areas. As you saw, in the landscape plan here, you can see we've connected these parks via landscape pathways and sidewalks throughout the development, so that there's very few places that you don't, you aren't already connected to a sidewalk, that connects you to a path, that connects you to one of the parks. So as, staff has worked with us, and actually, they nudged us quite a bit this way to make sure that we had everything in a convenient, accessible place for each particular lot, that they could take advantage of our parks and open space. Speaking of open space, we have 37 and a half acres dedicated to... Speaking of open space, we have thirty-seven and a half acres dedicated to open space, that's over twenty percent of our development, as you all know, in a PAD rezoning, we're required to have at least twelve percent of our project in development and in open space. And in addition, your parks, trails, and open space plan asks us to have fifteen percent. We're thrilled to be up at over twenty percent in this project. And forty percent of that of the usable open space will remain high and dry, it's not going to be retention. We've already talked about the school, and that's exactly right, Mr. Williams drew exactly where Amber Meadows was, that's just the ghosting in, so we'll have the other half of that. Yeah, here's the blank spot from the original Amber Meadows showing where the school is. And so that is part of what we're doing, is dedicating half of the school site, and then because that's the elementary level school, we'll be donating to the high school district for their typical agreement. Along with that, we'll be constructing traffic signals, when warranted, for our two main entrances down at one hundred and eighty-third and Yuma, and up at Harrison and Perryville. Again, that's when warranted. Now, our traffic study says that that's going to be a long time before those are warranted. More likely first the actual corner ones will come in and the city will put those in at the appropriate time. We're dedicating right of way for the adjacent streets. Again, I want to touch on, the staff mentioned, we had some real productive meetings with the neighborhood, and we did, in fact largely due to them, we were able to keep Harrison Street from plowing through to the other side of our development, in fact then potentially connecting with an alignment of Harris Street that would, Harrison Street that would run through the county lots. They did not like that idea, they took some coaxing, I think on their part, to get city engineering to agree that it was a good idea to not take it through, but in fact, in the end, that's what we're doing, Harrison Street will end here at this private gate. The other thing was, originally, we had on our plan one hundred and eighty-first Street being a roadway. Now, two things changed that, one is the neighbors said, please don't, and the other was, once we actually researched it, turned out it's a private easement, that's not ours, and it's not ours to take or to do anything with, it belongs to the county land, and that's their easement. So should they in the future choose to develop a roadway there, they have every right to do that along their portion there, and that's not on our side. We instead have our drainage retention and our trail along there. Also, we've agreed, as you know, your standard stipulations for two-story homes would be that on all corner lots and all lots that are adjacent to arterials unless there's thirty-five feet of landscape between them, and situations like that, you cannot have two-story homes, nor can you have any more than three two-story homes in a row without putting two one-stores in between them. So any development is already somewhat limited in what they can do with two-story homes. We've agreed as well to limit each of the lots along Jefferson and each of the lots along the one hundred and eighty-first or basically our east alignment to one story. That may seem like a little thing, but that affects sixty-six lots for us, and if you figure out how many two-stores you could do with those sixty-six lots, I count thirty-seven we're giving up. Again, an option many buyers prefer, we've agreed not to do that because we think that it would be a concession to our neighbors to the east, and we've tried to work with them as we can. We have staff support, and we would ask for your recommendation for approval as well, and with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions for the applicant? Mr. Gelsner.
Okay. I was, just overall, I really liked this project, I thought it was a pretty interesting use of the land and the way it worked. I have one concern that I'm going to bring up, and then I'm going to bring up a concern for a commissioner that isn't here, but if you go to page thirteen of the narrative, you talk about in development standards, the third sentence says, "All homes shall be designed to maximize diversity in both architectural style as well as color, garage orientation, et cetera." And then if you go to page nine of the narrative and you look at the decomposed granite section, you flat out say every yard, front yard shall have Gila Brown granite. Could you explain your thinking behind that, because that doesn't make any sense at all? Do you know where I'm coming from there?
Commissioner Gelsner, no, I can't.
Okay, then get the landscape department to take down that, have them do it.
Rather than put them on the spot. I think what we were trying to do is, we were trying to do a good thing by limiting the things they could do in the yard. We're nervous about things you don't want to see in your yard as far as decomposed granite. You can get a lot of lava locks, rocks going on. We are of course open to your suggestions if you would.
Well, I guess, I used to be on an architecture landscape committee for four years in an HOA, and there is a palette of, here's sixteen different types of rock that you can pick, and that's it, you know, end discussion. And, and I don't, whether you give them five, ten, sixteen, give them some choice, don't just give them one. Because I, you know, I mean, I think you're really defeating your purpose, especially in the fact that you're trying to promote diversity, and, I mean, that's a minor thing, but I think it, you know, it's something when you look down the street, it's like, oh my God, it's all brown.
Your point is well taken, we'll discuss that with our team and see if we can find a way to make that a little bit more of an option.
Now, I'm going to ask a question on behalf of Commissioner Osborne, who isn't here, and one of the things that I noticed was that all of your gates are unmanned, and so I'd like to know what are the, how, what type of gates are you planning on using, what are the emergency procedures for getting in and getting out? Because Commissioner Osborne has that concern, and I'm just making sure that it gets voiced tonight.
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Gelsner, and Commissioner Osborne.
In absent.
In absent. Our gates are unmanned, and as you know, that's actually pretty common. It's, they're, in ages past, gated communities sometimes did have the person at the gate. Many communities today, I'm familiar with several in Tepe that are quite nice developments, and you come up and you punch in your key card and the door automatically opens, you punch in your number, and the same thing on the way out, it's an electric eye that opens up, you don't have to punch in anything on the way out. So as far as unmanned, that is certainly our plan, we don't plan on having security at the gates, that's not really our concern.
Okay, let me rephrase the question then, all right. Is there, you will have an HOA, is there some type of active, will there be an active HOA representative on the site so that when the gate craps out, we know who to call?
Yes, we will make sure that there's a number you can call if that were to happen, and we'll make sure to design our gates so that they don't crap out.
Which for me.
Okay, yeah, that, we will certainly do that, that makes sense in any gated division, you don't want to be stuck in or out when you need to be the other place.
Thank you. Also related to, excuse me, the gated community provision, some communities leave the gates open during the day and have it closed during the evening, is that what's contemplated here, or you don't know at this point?
Yeah, Chairman Horstman, we don't know, it's up to, when ultimately the builders are selected, you know, that'll be discussion we have with them. Is there a preference one way or another that we could pass on or discuss?
Well, I think that probably during the construction phase, I would think the contractors would prefer to have it closed all the time, but you run the risk of construction vehicles digging gates and getting concrete trucks in and out and that kind of thing during the construction phase that could be problematic, but if they're in place and being used twenty-four seven, you may reduce the risk of site theft.
That's true.
So I can understand why you have a discussion with that.
Yeah, we haven't actually determined, but those are excellent points.
Mr. Chairman, I will tell you from experience that, you know, construction trucks and closed gates, friends they do not make.
I believe you.
I can imagine. Any other questions for staff or the developer? Chairman Horstman.
A question for staff, actually, I want to get back to these comments about the private streets. Stipulation fourteen states that improvements made on all arterial, collector, and local roads within and abutting La Privada shall comply with City of Goodyear's prevailing engineering design standards, except as modified by the city engineer. I guess my concern is that, from past experience, what I've just, what I've experienced is that after ten, twenty years down the road, these private roads start experiencing some degree of ill repair, and they, the residents then look to the city to try to make those improvements, in which the city typically declines because they don't meet the standards. So I guess I would like to see this stipulation read a little, a little more restrictively in one regard to alert the residents that the cities, these streets, their arterial streets are indeed below city standards, and that the city would not be responsible for any repair of those streets, and so this would probably need to be reworded.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, if I conveyed that they were not built to a suitable standard based on the question that you asked me earlier, I think that is a misrepresentation on my part. What I was trying to convey to you is that typical.
Private standard.
I'm sorry?
Private standards are different than public standards on the streets, these will be built to private standards.
So that was exactly my point.
But that's what they'll be built to.
To private standards.
But private standards have to be, the private standards have to be approved by the city engineer, and we have plenty of private streets in the City of Goodyear.
I agree with that, and I think that in previous discussions when we've had those kinds of incidents, we'd also indicated that there is no responsibility on the city's part to maintain those thoroughfares because they are indeed private streets, and I don't see anything in here that even remotely reflects that.
And Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Bay, if I could, my team is telling me that our, our internal private streets are built in a way that you will, they're identical to what your local streets would be that are public.
Okay, well, that was my question earlier.
I'd love to get my engineer up with a question about that.
Okay, all right, well, maybe the engineer can answer that.
There's a slight, slight difference in the fact that, you know, in a typical fifty-foot residential, the sidewalk, for example, is considered in the right of way. In this particular situation, it's a detached sidewalk, there's a five-foot separation, and it's not necessarily looked at in that same, in that, in that same vein.
Typically back a curb sidewalk, your five-foot.
Right, that's where, that's where the difference is.
Okay, but then the thoroughfare itself, the roadway between curves, where the vehicles have to pass through, is that minimized, or?
No, sir, I don't, I believe that is still constructed to city standard.
So then the right of way itself has been expanded an additional ten feet to include the tree, tree boundaries, so for, for example, a typical right of way may be, what, fifty feet?
Fifty foot, yes, sir.
So in this particular case, it's sixty?
Do you have the suction? Let me put this up for you, sir. This is basically, I mean, come in nice and tight on it.
Really, the only difference is, the private streets are in tracks and not in a right-of-way, so they're maintained, the HOA has to maintain tracks, they don't maintain right-of-way for the roads itself, so the, so the street itself is identical from curb to curb.
Curb to curb, okay.
Is exactly like any other street.
That was my question.
So it's just the, it's the corridor that the street is located in that's where it deviates.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff or the developer? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to on this case?
Chairman Horstman, one more comment, I'm sorry, I just want to say that I really like this. This is a great design, it's a great plan, I think this is really well done, I feel like I'm sort of like in a force city, and this is a real good model, and I didn't want you to think that I was trying to take away from what you were doing, I think this is a great plan and I'm in support of it.
Any further questions or comments? Sure, go ahead, Joe.
Chairman Horstman, since Commissioner Bay brought it up, we got to looking at it a little bit closer, and in the past, we would have a stipulation that says, in the event, if the city's ever asked to accept the streets, that they would have to be brought up to all city standards, and I don't see that stipulation in there, so we would request that that be added, and I believe it's acceptable to the applicant.
Okay. I think that's, that's what you were regaling.
Yes, that's what I was saying.
Yes, sir.
Bill Lanier, nine oh five, South Hundred and Eighty-First Avenue. I would just like to convey my thanks because I've met a few of these gentlemen and this nice young lady here, and I feel that they really have gone very well with us as far as the Equestrian Trail and ending Harrison, and I'd just like to publicly thank them for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? If not, I'll close the public hearing and ask for the action on the rezoning to the final PAD.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case zero five two hundred dash zero 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 two eight, La Privada rezoned with the indicated stipulations and the additional stipulation as requested by staff.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. De Brockert. Any further discussion on the motion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The companion piece to this is the preliminary plat. Anything further from staff or the applicant?
Do we, will we need a similar stipulation, the additional one on this one as well?
Yes. Case zero five dash five zero zero dash zero 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 one nine, La Privada preliminary plat, request for the approval of the preliminary plat for La Privada, subdividing one hundred and ninety-seven point eight acres into five hundred and seventy-eight single-family lots, generally located at the northeast corner of Yuma Road and Hundred and Eighty-Third Avenue in the plant area development PAD district for La Privada. Entertaining motion regarding that case.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case zero five dash five hundred dash zero 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 one nine, La Privada preliminary plat, with the fifty-two stipulations as indicated in the COAC and the additional stipulation describing the turnover of private streets to the city.
Second. Have a motion and a second for Mr. De Brockert. Any further discussion on the motion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next case is case zero six dash three zero zero dash zero 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 three, Central Square Mini Storage Caretaker's Quarters Use Permit, request for the approval to amend an existing use permit for a mini storage facility to allow the addition of a dwelling for a caretaker on a three point four three acre parcel within the general commercial C two district, generally located one hundred and fifty feet north of Van Buren Street and four hundred feet west of Pallaverty Drive and the Central Square Mixed Use Commercial Center. The applicant is Bar K Development. I'll open the public hearing in advance for the staff presentation.
Chairman Horstman, commissioners, members of the public, as you noted, this request is a supplement to an existing use permit that permitted a mini storage facility on the property that is being developed as the Central Square Commercial Center. It's located along Van Buren Street and west of North Pallaverty Drive. The Phase One building is basically in place now. basically in place now. You can see some of the improvements in the aerial photograph, but it is basically complete at this point and the project involved, second and third phase, one phase would have a mini-storage facility that would be located to the north and east of the commercial building and then another phase to the north and west, which would include a couple additional retail shops, buildings. When the use permit for the mini-storage facility was approved in two thousand and two, the owner didn't anticipate having a caretaker on the site at that time. However, a stipulation to that use permit required that an amendment would have to be submitted to the planning commission and council for approval if a twenty-four-hour onsite caretaker is proposed in the future and then that is what is being requested by this application. It's better oriented on the site. Basically, this is the retail shops building that has been constructed. The mini-storages would be located in this area and the entrance to the mini-storages would be located here with the caretaker structure located at the entrance to the mini-storage facility. On this exhibit, you can see it located right here. The facility itself have approximately fifteen hundred square feet, five hundred and seventy square feet of which would be for the sales office and about nine hundred and thirty square feet planned as the caretaker residence. The building will be designed in the architectural style that is consistent with the existing building in the Phase One of Central Square. Basically, the staff has found the application to be in conformance with the requirements of the zoning ordinance and an alternate citizen review process was used related to this request. Notices were sent to adjoining property owners with given information and details on the project. We have received no comments or inquiries regarding this request as of this date. Staff has recommended approval of the case with the five stipulations that are listed in your agenda support material. And that concludes my presentation. It will stand for any questions you might have.
Questions from the commission for staff. Mr. Gelsner?
When this project came before P and Z and council, if I remember correctly, there were cameras that were going to be placed in other, the typical security types of environment. This, this use permit, all that means is that the cameras and the TVs and the monitoring will go into this sales office instead of being monitored at an onsite guard shack. Is that, is that what I should assume or?
Chairman Horsman and Commissioner Gelsner, we probably shouldn't assume anything.
Okay.
I would, I would, because you know what happens, but I, I would actually defer to Mr. Arnold to answer that question since he is here tonight.
All right.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, Mr. Arnold.
Can I answer that?
Please.
Please, okay. We do definitely intend to have...
Can you just briefly identify yourself and your address, please?
I'm Fleming Arnold. I live on one three three seven eight West Clarence in Litchfield Park. And we do, we will have security cameras out in, you know, in certain areas and they will be in the office building there where the caretaker was based.
Okay, thank you.
Have you monitored every onsite?
This is an improvement to the project that was approved before and fully in support of it.
Other questions? Anything for Mr. Arnold? Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to address the commission on this project? Now I'll close the public hearing and ask for commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of case zero six dash three zero zero dash zero 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 three, the Central Square Mini Storage Caretaker's Quarters Use Permit. Do we have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second. I have a second for Mr. Bay. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you. Next case is case zero six dash three five zero dash zero 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 two, Lounge Ten Special Use Permit. A request for the approval of a special use permit for Lounge Ten to allow a thirty-five hundred square foot bar and cocktail lounge with live entertainment component within five hundred feet of a residential land use in the Parkway Village Commercial Center, generally located on zero point seven acres on the southeast, southwest corner of Australia Parkway and Roosevelt Street and the general commercial C two district and the city center gateway overlay district. The applicant is Robert Pietrowski, Lounge Ten, Inc. Open the public hearing and ask for the staff presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Lounge Ten is a proposed bar and cocktail lounge that proposes to locate in the Parkway Village Commercial Center, located on the southwest corner of Australia Parkway and Roosevelt Street. Lot four is located in the northwest quadrant of the development. The retail building where Lounge Ten proposes to locate is located three hundred and sixty feet east of the proposed residential land use. The outdoor patio would be approximately four hundred and ten feet away. Lounge Ten is required to get a special use permit because they will have a live music component within five hundred feet of a land use, of a residential land use. The music component will be jazz bands, blues, acoustic performances and other music of that genre. There will also be speakers on the outdoor patio similar to background music played at other area restaurants. The property, the property to the west of the Parkway Village Development is zoned PAD and is part of the Canyon Trails Phase Three development. The property has a proposed density of eight to fifteen dwelling units per acre of multifamily court homes. Lot four has an internally approved site plan and elevation. Lounge Ten would be in the east half of the building, occupying three thousand seven hundred and twenty-five square feet of the seven thousand four hundred and fifty square foot building. There is also a five thousand two hundred and twenty-five square foot building that will be between the Lounge Ten location and the residential land use, as well as a six-foot screen wall that will be between the commercial and residential land uses. The applicant submitted a noise study with the application. They found that the expected decibel level for Lounge Ten is eighty-five decibels. To compare, a typical noisy restaurant is seventy-five decibels. The interior design of Lounge Ten will include curtains and drapes to minimize the sound admittance so that most sound will be contained within the building. Directly outside of the establishment, noise will approximately be forty to fifty decibels. And again, to compare, forty decibels is the level of typical residential white noise. So by the time this noise travels the three hundred and sixty foot distance and is blocked by the six-foot screen wall, the noise would be lowered even more. The speakers on the patio will be approximately seventy decibels and by the time the noise travels the four hundred and ten feet westward, the level will drop to about forty decibels, which is again the level of typical residential white noise. And of course, the six-foot screen wall will further lower the level of noise. Lounge Ten also submitted a parking study. On the lot, lots one, two, three, and four, there are approximately thirty-five available spaces that are not being used by other uses. The zoning ordinance requires Lounge Ten to have fifty-seven parking spaces. The additional spaces will come from the office uses to the south of Lounge Ten. There is a cross-access parking agreement within Parkway Village. The peak office hours for these two office buildings is the typical Monday through Friday, eight to five or six o'clock. And the peak hours for Lounge Ten will typically be nine PM to two AM on Fridays and Saturdays. So there shouldn't be any conflict of peak parking times with those two uses. And if there is some parking during the Lounge Ten peak hours, that will probably typically be close, very close to the buildings where this corner area is where the Lounge Ten customers will primarily park. Lounge Ten is estimating that their food sales will make up about thirty percent of the overall business. This puts them in the category of a bar and would thus allow them to be a smoking establishment according to the city's smoking ordinance. However, the applicant has agreed to stipulate the establishment as non-smoking except for the patio area. So staff would request that a tenth stipulation be added to the report stating, "Smoking shall be prohibited in the interior of the establishment, but may be permitted on the outdoor patio area." Steph has found that the special use permit is in conformance with the zoning ordinance. An alternative citizen review notification was set out to property owners within five hundred feet of the proposed establishment and notice was published in the West Valley View on April eighteenth, two thousand and six. We have received one response from a Goodyear resident, Tom Levinsky, of one seven six nine seven West Mansour Street. And to paraphrase, he says that, "Goodyear really needs entertainment on the west side. I support this type of activity and urge you to allow this type of business." No other responses have been received. Notice of the public hearing was published on May second, two thousand and six, in the West Valley View. Steph recommends approval with the Step Ten stipulations, the nine that are listed in the packet before you and the added stipulation. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have and the applicant is also here to answer any questions you might have.
Questions of staff on this application?
Okay, I'm not sure if this question should be directed to you or the applicant, but do you know what's going to go into the other half of that facility? And the reason for my question is, is it possible that Lounge Ten may want to expand to include the remaining square footage?
Would you like to?
Speaking to the landlord, I'm going to go through...
Can you identify yourself and your address?
My name is Robert Pietrowski. I'm here to represent Lounge Ten. After speaking with the developer and the landlord, at this point, there's nothing planned for the neighboring thirty-seven hundred square feet in that building. And, and we at this point have no intentions of expanding, but we are not ruling that out in the future.
Okay. I'm trying to think, how do I phrase this? If, if in fact, you have not ruled out expanding your facility, does that kind of throw out your noise studies and everything and do we have to then come back and reconsider or how does that work?
It is my understanding they would have to come in for a special use permit amendment if they plan to expand the facility, which we would relook at these issues.
Okay. Good enough for me. Other questions of staff or the applicant?
Is the live music component, is that an everyday thing or is it just in the peak hours? Or do you anticipate that? We anticipate to have two to three nights of live entertainment on the weekdays. A week.
Other, other questions? Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions for resident Canyon Trails.
Sure, come on, come on.
My name is Warren Rupert. I live at, where do I live? 1081 North Hundred and Fifty-Ninth Drive. I'm about a quarter of miles of Crow Flies from where the location would be. Just had a couple of questions about, about the facility. First of all, what were the hours of operations? I didn't actually catch them. Weekend hours and weekday hours, I'm sure are probably different, but...
The total hours of operation are estimated to be from four to two AM, Monday through Saturday, Sunday, all week.
Okay.
And I live next to one house away from Portland, which if you look at the, well, depending on which map you look at, basically connects to Roosevelt. And the biggest thing I'm concerned about is where traffic will usually exit from the facility. Nothing against your customers, but I'm not too sure if I'm very thrilled about potentially inebriated people driving by in my street at one or two in the morning at high speeds or anything else. So I guess my next question would be, where does traffic, where is it planned to exit? Where's primary exit from the facility? Would it be directly onto Australia? I'm a little confused with the map, I guess.
People who drive on Roosevelt are going to be your neighbors, so you can discuss that with them. I see the people are going to go out to Australia Parkway.
I figure as much, but my wife especially is very concerned about it, that's why.
Roosevelt Road and Australia Parkway is a signalized intersection, so...
So Walmart's actually...
Walmart is to the north, right here, if you look. This is the entire Parkway Village Development and the Walmart area is to the north.
Okay, so most of the traffic probably go right to...
Most of the traffic will come up this interior drive and then exit on Roosevelt at this signalized intersection. This is a right-in, right-out exit so that some, some people possibly will come out this way and turn right, but I predict the majority of the traffic will come out at the signalized intersection.
Okay, but if you, pardon my question, is there a planned roadway through here as well or thoroughfare out to Australia?
This is an interior drive to the commercial area that stops here. It will not connect to the residential here.
Okay. All right. Yeah, since the Walmart is going in, there have been a fair amount of extra traffic that cuts across here, avoids everything.
Where, where are they, where are they going to other than Canyon Trails in your neighborhood?
Well, because Portland connects all the way over to Saraville and you can come down Cotton or different places over to McDowell and get over to Saraville, sometimes people avoid some of the more busy intersections by going through Portland.
Okay.
And it's a nice street and most people are actually very courteous on it, but there's a fair number that, you know, think, "Nice, clear street. I'd go fifty, sixty."
Well, if you, if you've got a problem of that sort, then you might want to talk to Chief Brown. Chief Brown and Police Department and get him to put the speed trailer out for you and...
He was out there about a year ago and it was helpful for a while.
Okay, well, I, there's no reason why we can't put it out there again, okay?
Thanks for, it's a question, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chairman Horsman and Commissioners and member of the public, I would point out too that there is a plan for a roadway that will extend from Roosevelt south. I believe it lines up with this Hundred and Fifty-seventh. That'll go south down to Van Buren Street too, so that'll be in... Oh, is this for the, well, this is apparently a rendering of the Townhome project that's immediately to the west and this Hundred and Fifty, this is Hundred and Fifty-eighth, would go south, but then it'll continue also all the way down to Van Buren, which also may help alleviate some of that cut-through traffic when another alternative is available. And that's, those developments are in, in the works, so you'll probably see them in the near future.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to, to speak on this? Mr. Gelsner?
This one's for the applicant. When this project came before P and Z, the elevations were brought up to us and one of the things that we... that we really liked was the two-story architecture that is here. And since you have a loft, a natural loft area with a window up there, or windows, I would encourage you to try something varying. And I'll leave, and that's enough of my comments. But Goodyear does need more projects like this.
Note taken. Any other questions? I was going to ask you on the record about your experience operating such types of operations. However, that's not appropriate for the, the public record because it really doesn't bear on the, your application. I'm personally curious and, and I'm excited about the fact that we're possibly going to have, we lost one venue that had live music that was primarily a restaurant, and there, as far as I know, there's only one other facility over in Old Goodyear that has live music, and I think that's a welcome addition. And hopefully, you'll get to the point where you've got live music about five nights a week instead of two or three.
We hope so.
So I wish you good luck with it, and I plan on supporting the application.
However, even though Chairman Horstman didn't ask the question officially, be prepared when you go to city council, because that question will be asked if we're prepared.
Yes, it will. Yes, it will. Anything further? Okay, great, thank you. Is there any other comments from the public for Commission? If not, I'll close the public hearing and ask for action by the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of case 06-350-00002, the Lounge 10 Special Use Permit, subject to the listed stipulations and the additional stipulation as recommended by staff.
Second. I have a motion, a second by Mr. Bay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Staff communications.
Mr. Chairman, members of the public, I don't really have any kind of a story. I guess we're up here having two meetings in June, and I think we're best on, going across many cases right now, so we should be doing a meeting and only one meeting, and I'm going to do this one first. For June.
Okay. Anything on the city center?
So we just completed meetings here at the property owners to go over the draft plan, which is what we were instructed to do by the city council. And we haven't put a new schedule together yet. We need to consult with the consultants how long it's going to take to make some of the revisions that we agreed to make to the plan, but we're hoping to wrap it up within the next couple of months. So we are making progress. Scheduling those meetings took a little longer than we had, had hoped, but we have completed them now and think we can move forward.
Also, Mr. Chairman, one thing. On the parliamentary procedure, we haven't scheduled that yet. We're looking at bringing someone in to do that for you, and we haven't arranged for that person to come in. Originally, the clerk was going to do it, but I think we're going to bring somebody in to do that. So I'll.
Has the city attorney determined that we were deficient in our procedure?
No.
Okay.
No, they, the city council actually had someone come in and do a training session on a Saturday for them, and in fact, is revisiting their rules of procedure to see if it was conformance with appropriate Roberts Rules of Order, and gave them some real good pointers. So I went to the, I personally went to some of the training, and I thought it would behoove us to have some similar training. So, not, not that you're deficient, but it's always good to have training.
It's more like rowdy. It's a little modesty fish.
Kind of like practicing, you know, you drive a lot, but you practice driving.
Sure. Okay, anything further? Motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.